This morning, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to serve in this community. And be with us, Lord, as we look at the agenda before us. Continue to give us the wisdom and the guidance, Lord, as we look at each case in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Board member in Serpents?
He is ill.
Board member Craig?
Here.
Board member Winn?
Here.
Chairman Herlander?
Here.
Board member Brunswick?
Here.
Board member Donley?
Here.
Board member Worster?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th meeting?
I'd like to make a correction first if I-
Please.
Where it speaks, Michelle, of what I said about my vote against it, I would like to have the second part of it. It was not that I would not be in favor for just any tower. It was that I thought that because there was more than one tower likely to be asking such that it is a change that the council should make, and that it was basically not an exception but generally going to be something that needed to be done.
Okay.
So if you just say that was, this was not a unique example most likely, but one we'd be seeing again and again, and that is something that the council should change the law for. Okay? Thanks.
Are there any other corrections? So as amended, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Public comment. So at this time, we do allow public comment. If you're here to comment on a particular case that's before us, I would urge you not to do it at this point, but to do it following the presentation and before we consider it. That gives it more relevance. But should you wish to speak now, feel free. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. So the first case before us is the Habitat for Humanity. Counselor?
Thank you. And the first witness is going to be Mr. Wayne Arnold, who has been qualified as an expert in accepted here before in zoning and planning, and after to be so accepted today.
Okay. Is there anyone else who intends to testify on this matter? Please stand, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Watching you, Stuart.
The witnesses have been sworn.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Zoning board members. I'm Wayne Arnold, certified planner, and I've appeared before you as Neil indicated. I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity. And our team today consists of, obviously Neil is our counsel, and we have Rick Mercer representing Habitat for Humanity, and Mike Dallett from our office, who's a civil engineer and did the water management design for the project. And he will probably do a brief overview of the water management system for you as I conclude some of our presentation materials. The property is located north of Bonita Beach Road, and it is located between Michigan and Wisconsin Streets. It's just a little under two acres. It's currently zoned TFC-2, which allows for duplex development. It does not allow two-family attached, which is what Habitat would like to build here. Different than the cases you saw last month in which they wanted to do single-family detached, these would consist of seven attached villa-type buildings. So that is the request before you. And the surrounding zoning is a combination of TFC-2 and multifamily zoning. We think the product type since it's undistinguishable to go from a duplex to a two-family attached, other than there'd be individual ownership of each side of that duplex unit, if you will. So we've developed development standards to allow Habitat to build the villa product. It's a new product for them. The property's currently vacant, and it's a little unique. It's clearly an infill parcel that we're dealing with. And it's in your medium-density residential land use category. We're asking for the maximum of 14 units. It actually would support more than that, but we just can't physically fit more than the 14 that we're proposing. The medium-density residential allows for there to be things such as single-family and duplexes. We and staff believe that what we're proposing here is consistent with the future land use designation, and we're under the maximum density that's permitted for your land use category. The master concept plan is, comes in off of Carolina Street to the south. It's a T-shaped private street, and we have several deviations that were related to the road configuration and alignment. There's a series of easements with the property owner to the east that will allow us to build the road, and the neighboring property owners are willingly participating with us to make that happen. There are some other deviations that are necessary in order to fulfill some of the staff's requested commitments with regard to some of the buffering and screening along the east, west, and north side of the property. But you can see here we're proposing 14 total lots with seven structures that would be built. And it's certainly fulfilling the need. Your comprehensive plan talks about the great need you have for more affordable housing in your community. There are also policies in your future land use element that talk about allowing there to be density bonuses if necessary for affordable housing. We're not seeking a density bonus with regard to these units, but making them work within the future land use category. The easements that I'm referring to have been highlighted here with the yellow arrows. One is a north-southeastement, the other one is an east-west easement that will allow us to make the 30-foot-wide private road. And staff has been very good about working with us on that regard. We've created some planned sections, and I'll let Mike Dallett talk about those in more detail if you have questions. But these are for guidance for when we get to the development order stage, so staff and we understand what those road cross-sections were going to be. And those cross-sections also come with a commitment to allow parking in front of each of the units. Our schedule of uses is pretty basic. Two-family attached is the only residential dwelling unit type we're seeking here. We've established property development regulations that are specific to this. Each lot would be 3150 square feet, and a minimum lot width of 35 feet, lot depth of 90 feet. And the front yard setbacks from Carolina Street is interesting. That ends up being a side yard for the unit itself, so that's why it's less than what you would normally find for a front yard. And then the Carolina Street access is 15 feet, but that was placed so that we could put some additional water management behind the lots. And I think that Mike will go through that in just a moment. We do have, as I mentioned, a number of deviations. I don't know if you want me to go through each and every one of those deviations. The staff report that Jay wrote does a very good job of detailing what our requests are in that regard.
Are there any where the city disagrees, is in disagreement with you?
No, sir. In fact, they've offered a couple of other minor conditions that talk about the, with regard to landscape buffer easement, and we're in agreement with the language that they've proposed. I'm going to let Mike talk from this slide and talk to you a little bit about what we're doing for water management. We worked extensively with staff on that over the last couple of months.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Mike Dallett with the Grady Minor Engineers. As Wayne alluded to, we work with staff on creating a water management system that meets current requirements for city code, and also to make it more viable in the long term of terms of maintenance and responsibility thereof. So it is a closed drainage system here along the internal streets and along the main street, and all that water is collected from the streets and the front lots and directed through a pipe system. It's not depicted here, but it'll all end up in this water management area on the west side of the lots. And we've worked with staff to create that as a separate tract that would be owned initially by the homeowners association and be more maintainable rather than being a part of a lot and a drainage easement. So that system would treat the required amount of water runoff and then discharge through a control structure out to Carolina. And that street will have closed drainage along the whole frontage there, which will connect all along the property line, discharge through the master stormwater system for the city. So we will be required to provide the proper amount of water quality, which is 150 percent of state minimum, plus do additional ICPR modeling, and we've agreed to that as part of this.
In doing your modeling, did you use the city's new model that they're using?
We will be. That officially hasn't been released to the public yet. In fact, our firm's working with the firm that's working on that, with Matt Feeny of Europe at the county, at the city. So as soon as that's done and Matt approves that for release to the public, yes, that's the model that will be used.
And that's the condition 5A and B in the staff report about the interconnected-
Yes, that is.
...model.
You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
I don't have anything else, Neil, in my presentation. I think that-
Yeah, I just want to ask one question. So the TFC-2, the existing zoning allowed duplex, and we're changing to a two-family attached. But if you're actually driving by, looking at the building, it would look the same?
It would, yes.
So the only thing we're changing is the form of ownership and the ability to put a lot line through the middle of the building.
Yeah, and I think we've had this discussion before, and your code, for whatever reason, doesn't really allow you to have a form of ownership with regard to the TFC-2. And I know that's a change that's been contemplated for many years, and hopefully it's one you will make, because, you know, I don't think there's any harm in allowing people to own their lot and have some control over that.
And so we have TFC on two sides, and R on two on another side. So the property's surrounded by same or similar type development?
And as far as I know, we had no objectors. I think, Jay, you mentioned you may have had one phone call, but I did not receive any correspondence or phone calls with regard to objections for our application.
So at your neighborhood meetings, though, you had, the people were solely, they seemed confused about the attached building. That just seemed to be the only thing that they were concerned about.
Yeah, and I wish. It's such a new product. Habitat doesn't have-
Right.
-any renderings, as we showed you, for their single-family homes. But I think that was a hard concept, and people, I think there was a thought that they were getting 14 times two, and it's really seven times-
Right. They were confused about the number. That's exactly right, yeah.
Yeah, and at the neighborhood meeting once that was cleared up, everybody was fine.
Can I just ask a question to make sure that I understand this? Is the only difference between a duplex and a two-family attached, the form of ownership? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So basically, because I couldn't see why this wasn't a duplex, I must admit, that I was as confused as your neighborhood meeting people were. So the one question that they asked rather repeatedly was about the form of ownership and how you were going to set up reserves to do things like necessary maintenance. And I'm not sure that when I was finished reading that, that that was clear to me. So there would be one HOA that all 14 units would be part of, and they would-
Yeah, and your regulations require that.
So does the HOA responsibility include things like the roofs on the seven houses and the painting of them and all that sort of stuff? That's what I was-
I think the Mercer's here from Habitat, so I'll ask him to respond.
Good morning. Rick Mercer, President, Habitat for Humanity, Lee and Henry Counties. So there will be an HOA established for the community, of which a portion of that will be just as any homeowners' association will, that will collect reserves for roofs, exterior painting, those elements that are common to the buildings. So the answer to your question is yes. There are reserves that will be collected for roofs and exterior elements of the buildings.
One of the other questions they had was, what is the proven success of this type of ownership in the HOA and in small developments such as this? You have a track record of having done a few of these. Can you tell us whether they've been, how successful they've been, and what problems you might have encountered?
We've had great success recently with homeowners' association type of projects. We've developed several. The most recent, within the city of Bonita Springs, is the Red Hibiscus that you may be familiar with. It's a project that we bought during the recession and finished out the neighborhood, created the homeowners' association. It's working fine. There are other examples. We have our Cody Street subdivision, which is a lot similar to this subdivision in size, where we created a homeowners' association that has common area maintenance. The ownership model is a model that's unique to Habitat in that we empower folks to break the cycle of poverty through homeownership, which is one of the requests that we're making to change the zoning to allow for the homeownership. And so we're proud of that opportunity to give folks the opportunity to buy their home. And so that's one of the main reasons that we're standing in front of you today. The homeowners' association model has worked very well for us in recent past. Keep in mind, a lot of our buyers are coming from, they're coming from backgrounds where homeowners' associations are not normal to them and it's not common to them. So we put them through classes. They are required to go to an eight-hour class in which they learn how their homeowners' association works and how they have to be an active part of that homeowners' association. So in addition to the down payment requirements that they have for the home, the sweat equity requirements they have for their home, they also have to go to 24 hours of classes to learn how to maintain the home, how to budget, properly budget for the home, but also how to work within the homeowners' association to keep the community in an attractive case.
I have a question. Are the streets going to be private or publicly maintained?
The streets are proposed to be private.
As some of you may recall, I've been opposed to this T layout for units like this that you've recently presented, only a couple of months ago, and I believe one last month. Maneuvering trucks through, on those roads really presents a complication, like, let's say, a moving van, which would be very minimal. But every week you have garbage collection and trash collection, and they have to do a lot of backing up to get to the trash. Do you have collection places somewhere else, or is it going to be in front of the house?
There's no central collection proposed.
Okay, all right. So the trash collection, both recyclables and garbage, you're going to have big trucks coming down the street, turning in to get to those lots. And then at the bottom of the T, they obviously have to back up.
That's correct, yes.
Wow. I'm surprised that the city still allows that to happen. Wayne, you mentioned earlier that there's going to be parking allowed on the street or just in the driveways?
In the driveways only, sir.
Okay. Well, if that's not enforced, these trucks that come through and delivery trucks also would have the same complication for those bottom lots. And even for the side lots, because they would, they obviously pull in, then they had to back out or turn around in somebody's driveway, which is really short to begin with. If it's a big truck, it's a problem. Tell me how that works on those that you have already completed and have occupied. How does that function with a 20-foot-wide street? How does it, how's it function in the other subdivisions you have that are like this?
We don't have a subdivision with the end result of the subdivision being a T intersection. The subdivisions that we have that are similar size to this subdivision have a cul-de-sac at the end of the subdivision. This project just simply wasn't large enough to allow that, and the code allowed the T intersection to back up, so that's the direction we went in order to make the project work.
And just, Mr. Worster, as part of the initial zoning review, the fire department, who has the largest vehicles that are servicing our community, do review it and have signed off and said that's an acceptable roadway design for them.
And they have other access. They can come in from the backyard for a fire. They could, on the side, other side street. I believe, I thought about that also, and I understand, but it surprises me that they accept that. But the waste disposal, that's not a problem with those trucks. If there's a car parked in the street, which I know is illegal, but I know probably is not going to be enforced rigidly, there will be cars parked in the street occasionally. And if that keys, a big truck can't get around a car parked in the street without really being an expert driver to maneuver a backup. And that really troubles me. The cul-de-sac situation, in my opinion, is an answer, where it allows cars and trucks to turn around, even though those could be designed, I appreciate the standard design would require the diameters to be big enough so that the wheels would not, could make the turn, but with a backup situation in substandard, it would still be better than a dead-end T. And for that reason alone, I'm going to have to vote against your project.
From our perspective, you know, there's such a need for affordable housing, you know, that's one of the reasons that I think staff is trying to work with us here. It is an infill site, and it's a challenging site. And in order to get the highest number of affordable housing units in your community that you need, we're going to have to accept some exceptions, assuming they don't have public health and safety risks associated with them, and we're confident that this does not.
Are people who have less money still entitled to be safe in their property?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we have a safe design. I don't think it's unsafe. We have sidewalks in the community as well, so that we know that pedestrians can be safely off the travelway.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'm concerned about traffic from another standpoint. As I look at the plan, these are single driveways. They're 20, 21, and 22-foot wide driveways. The length is 20, 21, and 22 foot, as I look at it. So I'm concerned about additional parking, guest parking, for example. Most families today have multiple vehicles, and I don't see where you're going to have any space here for, where the guest park, where's guest parking going to be?
Well, each of the units are-
Well, the units are going to have garages. Rick can address that.
Okay, that's not clear from this.
Each unit, each unit has an enclosed garage, a single-car enclosed garage, and we widen the driveways specifically on this product to make sure that we could park cars side by side in the driveway in order to get them off the street.
All right. Because most people down here use their garages for basements. Back to life.
I'm a Florida boy. I don't know about basements.
Yeah, and I know there was concern about the waste trucks and roads, cars in the roadway, but if you look at condition 5D, we have to have signage or other mechanisms to prevent parking in roadways, so that's not going to be permitted. And there are also the provision that you have to comply with the, regardless of what's in here, you still have to comply with the LGC, and we still have to get a right-of-way permit. So all the public health, safety, and welfare issues relative to the travelways and things like that will have to be addressed.
I'd like to suggest that policing that no parking would be, really be something that had to be maintained, and I suspicion there will be parking along the street because policing becomes expensive for the homeowners' association to provide.
I cannot make an assumption, sir, that the zoning condition is going to be violated. It's there for a reason, and has to be identified and submitted being appropriate to deny a zoning, because based on an assumption that there'll be a violation, particularly when the comp plan says the city has an obligation to provide for affordable housing.
No question about that. But I still concur with your thinking as far as who's going to enforce it, and-
Well, that's one of the reasons they have a homeowners' association.
I understand. I live in one.
You live in one, so you know.
I know, but I know how that works also. And it, in theory, it should work fine. In reality, it doesn't always. And especially in a neighborhood of this sort, I think that's a concern. There's going to be on-street parking. There's going to be people parking, because if there's, even with the garage and two cars, there's still that chance that there's going to be that fourth car. How many bedrooms are these units?
Two.
Three bedrooms.
Three.
So you got three cars there, maybe four? It's going to be, I see, I have a concern with-
We were sensitive, we've been sensitive to the issue of cars parking along the street, and for several reasons. One is, obviously, we want a safe environment within our subdivisions, so we've made driveways wider to accommodate that. One of the reasons why you see cars parked on streets most times is because the driveways are not wide enough for two cars to pull side by side. We've addressed that by making these driveways wider. The second reason is, is that we have a homeowners' association that regularly goes out and issues tickets for folks who park on the street. It's tough in an affordable housing community to nick somebody for $50 every time they park in the street. However, that is the, that is the condition that's in the homeowners' association, and it will be enforced. We have no other avenue to keep them off the street other than to enforce the parking regulations that are in the documents.
So we've gotten a little bit out of order here, where we haven't heard from the city yet. Is there anything further you wanted to say, sir?
No, thank you for the consideration.
You're welcome.
I would, I'd like to ask a question of the engineer and the water issue again, if I might be. Typically, when we see restrictions on setbacks and things like that for developments, there's a coverage requirement. I don't see a coverage requirement here. Maybe that's taken up with the water retention area. But there's very little room on the site plan for impervious, pervious things like grass.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got the footprint of the building plus a 20-foot-wide, impervious driveway, plus sidewalks, plus a place for mailboxes. I mean, what's left for, and how do you address the typical city requirements for impervious area?
Maybe, Jay, could I bring that master plan up on your presentation?
Yeah. You just bounce through it.
Okay. So the, I would agree, the fronts of the lots are definitely filled up with what you just indicated, mail kiosks, driveway sidewalks and whatnot. But the rear and the sides, sorry about that, pushed the wrong button here. The rears and the sides, particularly the rears, and here, this is relative to the site, it's a large percentage of water management. It's not a very big site. It's two some-odd acres. And this water management here, we've run the calculations on it, is, provides plenty of capacity. It's not very deep. Doesn't need to be. It's dry retention, so the bottom, dry detention, the bottom is above the wet season water table. So based on the volumetric requirements, including the 150 percent, including the ICPR routing, there is plenty of capacity in this rear water management area here. And based on similar projects, it's about the right same percentage that you would provide on a similar project.
All right.
Did we mess you up?
Yeah. So this is the application of Greyhound Alley, Habitat Humanity. We've already talked about that. It is 1.58 acres, rezoning from TFC-2 to 14 attached dwellings, or seven buildings. There's an overall location in the city. The location, as discussed previously, is off Carolina between Wisconsin and Michigan Streets. The property is vacant. The future land use on it is 11.6 units per acre, which would allow up to 21 units. It is zone TFC-2. They're asking for the PD. They need the PD for a variety of reasons, most of which is their building product type, and of course, some deviations in order to- and of course, some deviations in order to make that all work out. So we have that, and then we have the site plan, and we'll talk about the site plan real quick for a moment. Much discussion has been had about the road landscaping and the tee turnaround. I'm going to talk about the tee turnaround first, and then I'll talk about the rest as we go forward. They could have come in and platted this property and had a tee turnaround. They probably would be one building less in order to meet the plating requirements had they done that. But that was, that would have been an option that could have happened, straight under the code. They wanted, obviously, more units to keep their costs down, to provide the homes more affordable, so, and they chose this route. What I want to point out to, as far as landscaping, if you look in between the driveways, there are areas where we would imagine street trees, well, actually, not imagine, we will require street trees to be planted when they come with their landscape plan. They do have a minimum number of trees to be required for each lot. We can talk about that in depth if you want to, but they would, they would meet the landscaping requirement. One of the many things that staff had concerns about with this was drainage, parking, and part of, part of the design that you will see, I'll go back and forth a few times here, in the cross-sections, if you noticed, they, one of the concerns staff had is 18-foot front yard setback, because how do you park a car 18 feet? Now, the code says you can do that. The code says that's enough space for a car, but the fact of the matter is, and I think they realized after discussions with them, that in a working neighborhood, a working-class neighborhood, you have a higher percentage of pickup trucks, and you really need at least 20 feet. One of the other things that staff was worried about in the roadway, in the roadway design, was how do you protect the edges of the road? And you'll notice that they've done here is they have a valley gutter to the east, because they have the individual to the east who has access to his property, and they have F-curb with sidewalk raised behind the curb, a six-foot sidewalk with no grass strip. And that was done on purpose to make sure if something needed to move around, you could go on the sidewalk, you could drive on the curb, which gives you a net of 30 feet. If you think about that, you have your 20-foot of road, you have two feet of curb, two feet of curb, six-foot sidewalk, there's a net of 30 feet of wide pavement there. For an emergency access, that makes sense, that is not to be used on a daily basis. It's not dimensioned, I would like to get a confirmation from the applicant, that their driveways are 16 feet wide. And I believe that's what they, they're drawn at, but I didn't, that's not actually dimensioned on here. That's so they can put two cars side by side, plus they have the ability to put a car in the drive, in the garage, because parking has always been a concern for staff in a neighborhood where you have at least two incomes, sometimes three people working, because there's kids and so forth, and they have attempted to address that. As far as the turnaround, that is still allowed in the code. We rely heavily on the fire department for that, because they are our partner, and they are the thing we're most concerned about, the response time, being able to get in there, life, safety, and health. So they did look at that, and they are in agreement that it's fine for their purposes, the way that it's laid out. I'll touch on drainage for a second. Staff was concerned about the drainage, especially originally, they were going to put the drainages at easement into the lots in the rear. Our concern about that is, is that homeowners don't always understand that just, they can own something that they can't use. And so if also someone puts a fence in, and if it's not visible from the road, how do you prevent somebody from filling in the drainage? Not maliciously, unintentionally. You know, they want to put a swing set back there, they want to do other things. Staff felt it very important that that be a separate tract that would be dedicated to the homeowners association, and the homeowners association has the responsibility to maintain that. This property will be platted under our code. Under the plat code, they have to form an HOA, and we have a set of standards for which they go by, that will make them maintain the road. If it's private road, it'll be dedicated to the HOA for maintenance purposes. Their software water management permit will be addressed in the HOA, the drainage will be addressed in the HOA for maintenance. There's also provisions in there that gives the city certain rights, should it become defunct, which is very important for the city, as we always worry about drainage and drainage problems. So those are all issues that are already in our codes that will be put on this project as they go through the development review process.
Mr. Sweet, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Go back to your plan. On the plat-
Wrong way.
One more. All right, so the water detention is along the back of those top six lots, right, on the west side. So are you, when you talked about protecting that, on the east side of that swale, well, it's going to be a swale, that's collecting the water, is there going to be a fence? Is that what I heard you say a second ago, which is about six feet off the, off the building?
We have not discussed whether there would be a fence around it, but what we wanted to make sure is that it didn't get fenced off. So they're supposed to be 10 feet from the retention area to the back of the building. Our concern was, because the first plan that came in, very similar, but they showed the lot lines going all the way to the back and that being an easement. Our concern was, is that, again, unintentionally, someone says, I own the property, my granddaughter wants a swing set, I want her to come visit me, they put a swing set out there, and before you know it, people brought in rocks and dirt and landscaping, and also the retention area doesn't work. So we wanted to make sure that it was a separate parcel controlled by the homeowners association to guarantee that it continued perpetually.
This is a safety feature, it would appear to me, if it's the detention area, say we've had an event and it's filled, it should be fenced off from a protection point of view. If it's 10 feet away from the back door of those units, right along the side of it, like a four-foot fence would stop a kid from going back and getting in the ditch.
Based on their preliminary design, and I'll defer back to Mr. Dillit, because we don't have a final design yet, okay? His preliminary design shows the finished floor of the house is at 14, and the bottom of the dry detention area at 12. If that's the case, it really shouldn't be a safety issue for the kids. On the other hand, if such time as they come in for their final design, if that's deeper, then yes, we would, we would have them put a fence up to protect. So it really depends upon the final design. Right now, the final design is they have proposed it, and with a four-to-one slope and seven feet, dropping two feet, and basically, seven, eight feet, they should be fine. I say that with proviso, this is a preliminary design, when they come with that final design, we would make them modify it accordingly.
I have a question about the buffering along the north property line up against the street, and also over on the, on the eastern side of that road. If you see, on the eastern side, if you look at that aerial photograph, there's a house, you know, that's almost five or six feet away from where a fence would, would go. And the plan shows that, you know, there's a deviation and a modification of the buffering requirements in both of those areas that have been agreed to by somebody, I guess Steve Butters. Could you walk us through how that agreement was arrived at, and what the compromises really are that have been made on what, from what the normal buffering requirements might be there?
If I may, let me go through the next couple of slides, and we'll get right to that, because that's, that's part of the, the presentation. So we just talked about the cross-sections, and I'll just touch on it real quick. Understand that we wanted to make sure that there was enough area from, that a car bumper or hitch wasn't hanging over the sidewalk. So we may, even though they have an 18-foot front setback, we have a condition here about the setback from the sidewalk, to make sure that the parking is sufficient in that regard. So the proposed uses, I've already talked about, the dimensions and the setbacks are the same as we've already talked about. So let's get to the deviations. So they asked for some very specific deviations. Deviation, number one was to reduce it to a 30-foot right-of-way, so the 40. Deviations two and three are to talk, talk about the separation of the driveway from the road, and so forth. And then deviation four was for the internal parking of the roads. Deviation five was connection separation. Deviation six was the streets and the circulation pattern, and we'll talk about that in a second. Probably about regulations for the 50-foot setback from the perimeter, and then the eight-foot setback. So as we go through these, and I'll jump right to our conditions of approval. Conditions two and three, approved with the following condition, the applicant should construct a 90-foot long, six, and this is where the two roads about the property owners next to them. Approved following condition, the applicant should construct a 90-foot long, six-foot high, opaque vinyl or wood fence, five foot south of Carolina right-of-way with a double O hedge. The fence should be, I'm sorry, this is the one on Carolina. So on Carolina, they're going to build us a 90-foot fence, designed, it starts at where the front setback is, we still want to make sure that drainage is monitored, so along there, there's 90-foot opaque fence, and with that, a double O hedge, and then we call it out. And then the applicant should also connect, construct a 40-foot long section of a six-foot high opaque vinyl or wood fence at the terminus of the east and west section of Greyhound Alley with a double O hedge. In other words, so where they pull in, and their headlights could be hitting the neighbors and so forth, we want a 40-foot section of fence centered on the road with a double O hedge to abate any impact they would have with their headlights as they come and go at night. And then we also required as a condition, a number five, number five was the condition of separation for driveways. We don't want a driveway on Carolina, we want them all to come off of Greyhound, and so the condition is they give us a limited access easement during that plating process, where the city has control of all ingress and egress off of Carolina. So basically, they would give up their right to have ingress, an egress off Carolina in exchange for the alley and the deviation.
That, the first unit that butts Carolina, I think you mentioned that the setback there was looked at as a side yard setback rather than as a front yard setback?
Yes.
Is that a deviation as well?
No. But one of the, one of the things that we routinely do when it comes to corner lots, we do this on plats all the time, and that if someone has a corner lot, we don't want an argument later on that this is my front, and this is my front. So what we do is we pick your front, and then we do a limited access on the other side, so that, that way the driveways don't access the wrong way, that way they can have the closer setback, because they don't need it for the purposes of vision and so forth of parking. That's a routine feature in our land development code.
One more question, pick up on the statement made about, again, a hammerhead or roundabout, cul-de-sac. It has, someone has laid one out on this, and that would take up one big lot or two units, but it could happen on this site?
We looked at a variety of different options, and basically, they end up losing at least a building to do it any other way. One of the things that was talked about, and for a lot of reasons was not pursued, there is an easement that goes through the property. Had they, had they decided, and this is a, more of a policy decision, had they decided to go with a maximum density, which would have been 50% higher than what it is, we would have pushed for them to go through the Villanova condo complex in the south, which there is an easement, but to do that, you get into a sticky wicket, because the condo has already built dumpsters and other improvements to the south there. And so, you know, you're talking about a fight that's maybe not the, the best thing to pick.
But there's an easement, what you're saying is there's an easement, but the easement is occupied by dumpsters and so on.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Who enforced that?
Nobody.
I plead it was before the city was incorporated.
Absent going into that easement, just totally contained on the site that we have presented, had they put a roundabout or a hammerhead facility to do a semi-standard turnaround?
You could do something different, but in doing so, you're talking about losing a minimum of one entire building.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you know, anything's possible. You could build four units, four buildings, or five buildings, and just have a, an L-turnaround. I mean, there's a variety of possibilities there, but they also have made it very clear, and I think there's no, they haven't hidden it, they need the numbers to work for their affordable housing numbers.
I understand that.
And if you take away units, you take away that, that possibility.
I understand, but you're also making what's, what's left with only 12 units, let's say, it would be more maneuverable and better, bigger lots.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll go back just one little bit to make sure that we get everything on the record, and that is, just, I'm going the wrong direction. Let's see. Get me off my game early, and, and there it goes. The request is compatible with existing planned use development, existing uses in the area. So what I want to point out is that to the north, you do have RS1, single-family. One of the reasons that we have insisted on that buffer and fence along Carolina, because on the north side of Carolina is RS1. On the south side of Carolina, and to the east and the west of the property, it is TFC 2. There are, it is a mix of both single-family and duplexes that have been built to the east and to the west. Single-family predominantly to the east, duplexes predominantly to the west. On the south side, you have the condominiums of the Villanova condominium, and that is owned RM multifamily. Staff is recommending approval. Everything is, we've already talked about. Our conditions, we are approving, we recommend approval as requested, except for two, three, and five, which we have our conditions here. We have conditions about the surface water, they are the standard conditions we've been putting in for the storm routing modeling, they have agreed to that. It is important to also look at item H, and that is, development must comply with all the requirements the LDC at the time of local development order approval accepts may be granted by the deviations. So I want to point that out. I don't anticipate that they're going to be two years or three years before they build this, but if the code changes, other than the deviations they asked for, they will have to adhere to that. And that's the standard we've been putting in all of our conditions. It's just a heads-up for Liberty, no, that's what's going on. And then I have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Mr. Sweet, I know there's been concerns raised about the roadways and access and parking and that sort of thing. Based on that last condition that you indicated, will this property have to be developed in accordance with the LDC, except for the deviations that you've noted? And does your LDC, is it designed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare?
Yes.
Anything further, Mr. Sweet?
That's-
Do you have any rebuttal?
Well, I don't know if there's any public here to speak, but if there is-
Yeah, well-
-we reserve the right. Thank you.
Good. Is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Kate State. I'm an owner of a budding property, and the parallel road to the proposed Greyhound property, which is called Pension Place, backs right into the back of my property. This is specific to the trash issue. I've owned the property for 30 years, lived there for well over 10. Trash trucks come every week. They back right up Pension Place, no problem. And that is much less controlled as far as on-street parking than what's being proposed for Greyhound. I don't know if anybody's talked to Advanced Disposal directly about that, but I've never known, and I hear it every week, because they're very good and very faithful about coming in, but they just back right up, and the Greyhound road is equally straight as is Pension Place. Thank you.
There any further comments by the public? Does the applicant wish to present anything else?
No, sir. I think the staff and the applicant are in agreement, and we submit that the issues that have been raised have been addressed or will be addressed under the city's codes.
Anything further from the city?
Yes, sir.
So, what is the wishes of the board?
Kevin, I'd like to ask the applicant, would they be willing to consider the 12-unit with the turnaround as an amendment to their plan without coming back to this board for the other deviations, but to revise their plan to have a turnaround at the T? Would you consider that as part of a motion? Acceptable to you? 12 units instead of 14 with a turnaround?
Yeah, I think Mr. Sweet made a point, and we can certainly look at it, but the concern is losing units because the objective here is to make this affordable, and the city's comp plan does say that the city is going to seek public-private partnership to provide affordable housing, and the city just doesn't have that many locations where it's possible. So, we are trying to meet a need. The city's supposed to address that need, and we just get further behind. So, I know Rick can tell you how hard he looks to try to find property, and he can tell you, well, and I want him to tell you. Tell him what the demand is for the city and how much of that you can actually meet.
Again, Rick Mercer, president of Habitat. The numbers don't work for us with 12. Just got to be honest with you. It's expensive to develop a subdivision, given all the rules and regulations, and we understand why they're in place, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. We've looked at this thing 100 different ways to try to make it work, and the 12-units with a cul-de-sac design just simply doesn't work for us. But not only that, but the layout that we have meets the code. So, there's probably 100 different reasons that you could look at this and say, I would support it or I wouldn't support it. We're just asking you, as Neil said, with that public-private partnership and that spirit in mind, that we're so desperately in need of affordable housing in Benita Springs, to look at this from the positive side and say, yes, this project meets the code, provides for the health, safety, and welfare of the public, therefore, I will support it. We don't know who the families are that will ultimately live in this community, but we do know one thing. We will receive over 15 applications for each one house that we sell. That's how desperate the affordable housing need is in Benita Springs, and we just ask for your support.
And I just want to remind you, what we're really asking for here, we could put those buildings on the property now if there wasn't a lot line. We're going from duplex to two-family attached, which is a form of ownership, is what we're really asking for. So it's not a dramatic difference than what's already approved, and the need is really great. So, thank you.
Mr. Worcester.
Ms. Montgomery, the answer to my question then is no.
We can look at it, but if you lose units, yes, sir, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board?
I just want to say, as a realtor in the city of Benita Springs, I certainly understand the need for affordable housing. We do, but I have a strong concern still about the parking and the policing of the off-street parking, or on-street parking, I mean. Parking on the front lawns, a lot of these people are in the construction field. They probably bring, as we already said, pickup trucks home. A lot of times, those trucks have trailers. Where do they go? We talked about the garage that they have and the need to have additional storage space. I just see it's a real tight fit. Everything has to line up just perfectly for, I think, 14 units to fit on this property. And I don't know how you're going to police it. I just don't see that.
I'd like to respond to that, because I think Neil has made a point. If the type of ownership here were duplex, which is basically rental, all exactly those same issues that you're raising would pertain, and yet, it would meet every requirement of our code and need to go forward. I think what we're being asked is to, in a crying public interest need, and that is for low-income housing, and low-income housing that can accomplish the goal that Habitat for Humanity tries to accomplish, and that's ownership, not rental of their property, to approve for the ownership version what we would approve anyway for the rental. And I don't think that's a stretch. I mean, I agree with all the concerns that you raise, but obviously, our code would allow that to go forward if we just made these rental properties. So I think if, to the extent that you give deviations and you give exceptions when it's in the public interest, I find it hard to imagine a more compelling public interest for Benita Springs right now than to provide housing that is low and moderate income housing. So, I am comfortable voting in favor of this, as it has been worked on by our staff, to address many of the issues that neighbors do. And I will tell you, the one testimony from the public that described that where she lives and has lived for a long time, that has a similar road configuration and that the garbage trucks have no problem, was most persuasive to me, and I appreciate that you came to give that. So, I would highly, I'm going to support that. I would highly recommend that my colleagues do as well. Thank you.
Is there anything, anybody else want to say anything from the board?
I think it's, you know, you couldn't get a more economic site plan and project than this. I mean, the houses are, being familiar with some of the things that Habitat has done, I mean, it's a minimum to get three bedrooms and a parking space. And the site plan, there's no way that you could get another half a unit in this place. I mean, everything, every inch of this project is taken up. And what you would, I mean, you could, you could make the argument that this is not a well-planned project, it's an economically planned project. And I think what the counselor said was true, and what you said, Barbara, was that pride of ownership makes the difference in this project, and I would be in favor of it, although I don't, visually and architecturally and aesthetically, I might not like the final product, but that's not the, our issue here, so.
Anybody want to say anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve, as presented by staff.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Everybody, call the roll, please. So, a yea vote is in favor, a nay vote is opposed.
Board member Craig?
Yea, in favor.
Board member Nguyen?
Yes, yea.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Board member Brunswick?
Brunswick was called.
Yeah, yea.
Board member Donley?
Yes.
Board member Worster?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You convinced me. Well, yeah, you did. The next case is the Benita Springs YMCA Community Facility Plan Development. Does anybody need a break here?
I would love to go to the ladies' room.
You want to take a break?
Like, five minutes is enough.
Five minutes, okay. Hey, we're going to take a five-minute break here.
I can't vote for substandard stuff anymore here. I agree. I've supported, I've supported, I've supported them for years. You get six things in the mail every year. I mistake and I fill out and write a check for more than one. This is me.
Let me tell you something. How are you doing? How are you?
All the pressures on you.
It'll be fine.
It'll be fine.
Approved and at that point whether or not there was or not-
The standard at the time was very, well, let's just say it's less than what it is today. And in terms of-
I think?
Yes. And what they did do was they were able to get their permit from the water management district, as all projects this size would. Now, when they're coming in for this modification or this amendment, because the square footage that's associated with the original approval is not being exceeded, we're simply putting this use on the site. That's where there's the discrepancy. And I understand your concern. We have worked with them so that they will not only be providing us the information that would normally be required for any other permit in this city for modifying their environmental resource permit, but they also volunteered to go through the modeling program as well. So we'll be able to have a better look at what's going on in that area because this is one of those areas that, like you said, we saw significant flooding during Irma.
So if I, counselor, if I understand your position, what you're telling us the law is, they wouldn't have to provide a water management plan even at the development order stage? By your reasoning?
Well, it depends on what the development order is for.
Well-
Right now, we're on to work-
It's for an 11,000 square foot daycare.
Okay.
That's what it's for. We know what it's for.
They would. They would have to provide it at the development order phase. There's the discrepancy-
But your argument was, they don't have to provide it to us.
No, you're talking about at this hearing, in this part of this process.
Yeah.
That's what your question was. At least that's what-
So why would they be required to put it at the back end then?
Because that's when they're actually gonna be- That approval is what actually authorizes the turning of dirt. Nothing, this is just, these are just changes to master concept plan, uses, other things that do not affect the development of the land. And therefore, that's not triggered at this stage.
Okay. So why is the city going first?
Just gonna give you a little bit of an introduction, then we're gonna let the applicant provide their presentation. I just wanted to let you know that what you have in front of you is a little bit of a cheat sheet that should provide to you a lot of the background information to have at your fingertips while we're going through the presentation. And behind that is a master concept plan so that you would have that for your reference. Hopefully, this makes these proceedings a little bit quicker. So with that, I'll let the applicant take their presentation forward.
Hi, good morning. I'm Tom Barber from Agnoli Barber &amp; Brundage, for the record. I'm the Director of Planning at Agnoli Barber &amp; Brundage. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, the FPZA, and I'm on the Estero Design Review Board. I want to introduce my team. Here with me today is Robert Connor from Hall Architects, Mark Suein from the YMCA Board, Pete Shattuck from Sky Family YMCA, Joey Bellinger from Sky Family YMCA, and Kevin Dowdy, the project engineer with Agnoli Barber &amp; Brundage. So, you know, I'm excited about this project. I'm a native Venetian. I grew up going to the YMCA, the Naples YMCA, and when this YMCA was constructed, I also started using it as well. It was originally developed in 2005 with community support, money from the community to help build the YMCA. It was run by the Naples YMCA. And then unfortunately, it was closed in 2011. Fortunately, the Sky Family YMCA stepped in and bought it in 2012. And we've been on an upward trend ever since then. We're happy to announce that this past year is the best year that the Benita YMCA has ever had with membership and participation across the board. And in full disclosure, I'm also a board member of the YMCA as well, as well as our consultant. So the location, it's on the other side of I-75 down in Terry. And here's a closer view. It's along Kent Road, just to the north of the property are the city soccer fields. To the south is San Sushi Lakes. Also to the west is the lakes of San Sushi. And to the east is Pine Lake Preserve, which is owned by Lee County and under a conservation easement. It'll never be developed. So I just wanted to take a minute of your time to talk about what the YMCA is. As I said, it was first opened in 2005 and went through some ups and downs and is now a very successful YMCA. Every year, they participate in a water safety program. We're upwards of 140 youngsters are taught about water safety at no cost. 300 children are taken care of in summer camp, not just at the YMCA facility, but also for the city rec center as well. 225 children are in after-school care program. Some of those children are at the YMCA. Some are throughout the community in different elementary and middle schools. The YMCA runs those programs for them. And they actually have their own buses and bus the children to the Benita YMCA if the need is there. Also, the Benita Y is unique in that they scholarship across the board. So other YMCA's, you'll see memberships of $50, $60, $70 for a family. The Benita YMCA is 75% of that cost, knowing that their demographic is more needy than most. So here's just a slide, you know, also showing what the local Benita YMCA does. Most notably, $56,000 was aided in scholarship assistance last year alone. And everything that the Y does is based on donations. It's a not-for-profit. So every donation dollar, every dollar they raise, they try to put back into the community and give the place, give children in the community a place to be, a safe place to be. As I spoke about the Sky Family YMCA, it's made up of Venice, Inglewood, Port Charlotte, Pontagorda, Fort Myers, and Benita. And a notable number on this slide is $1.3 million in scholarship assistance awarded. It's also important to note that the Sky Family YMCA has three preschools that are existing from zero to five-year-olds. And they've all been very successful. One in Charlotte Harbor, one in Venice, and one they run for the PGT, which is, they make windows. So their children have a place to stay while their parents are at work. So what we're proposing here on the site is a 10,800 square foot facility with 12 classrooms that would range in age from infant to five-year-olds. And have enough space for 128 students with a larger room for 30 additional after-school care students. So as we look at the site, it's an existing CFPD. The, it was put together in 2003 and '04. And as part of that development, as you see the white dash line here. There we go. The white dash line is the property boundary. So the northern portion is a city property. There's three city soccer fields that are owned and managed by the city. The southern portion is the YMCA. The surrounding land uses, I described before, but the south and west are residential. So here's what the proposed site looks like. You'll see that a lot of the paving area is highlighted. Some of that will remain the same, but we are gonna do some landscape enhancements all throughout the parking lot. The YMCA, the Sky Family YMCA is located at the bottom left corner of this slide. That's, north is to the right, to orient yourselves. So the school layout had a couple of determining factors to put it on this site. And I'll go through those now. We wanted to buffer the property owners, the surrounding property owners, you know, to be aware of their property values and to not impact them. We also wanted to separate it from the YMCA facility a little bit to avoid interaction of vehicle and pedestrian traffic, people coming and going from the YMCA itself, to try to set that apart so children coming into the school don't have to look out for as many vehicles coming back and forth as their parents bring them to the classroom. And then also privacy of classrooms. So we wanted the classroom windows to be buffered and screened appropriately. So as I say, here's another look at the site plan. The school itself, which is again to the bottom left corner, is on top of an existing parking area right now. We're not impacting any non-impacted area. So to make up for the parking we're taking away, in between the city property and the YMCA property, there's Lime Rock Parking now, and that's gonna be improved to be paved parking spaces. So as I spoke before, here's an overlay showing the YMCA facility over the existing parking area. And to the point of stormwater management, we're actually reducing the impervious area as a whole. So as we zoom out, I can show you how the stormwater works for the site. Where have the closest neighboring property owner? I know you can't read this section. Next slide will show you a little bit closer. There's roughly 230 feet between the school and the property owner. There's a 20-foot landscape buffer along Lake Shalimar Drive, a 30-foot landscape buffer on the YMCA property, and then additional plantings will be planted around the school as part of the development order. There's a zoomed-in view of that section. So to the far left, you can see the residential home. And to the far right is the school. Lake Shalimar Drive is pointed out with the two cars. So that's the buffer that'll lay between the home and the school. And we held two neighborhood information meetings. There were only two attendees other than our board. And the two attendees were recent property purchasers of the property to the north, and they're looking to one day put together maybe an outdoor church there. And they were excited about our project. So we had no negative feedback from the community. It was all positive. Here's an aerial view just showing what that would look like. You can see the parking lot there in kind of triangular shape. That's where the school will be. And some pictures showing the existing buffering. So let's go through the uses. This is an existing master concept plan. All the uses that we're proposing here are already part of the plan. The area that's designated for the school is already part of the plan. Really, the only change here is to show the school on the plan itself. Here's what the original master concept plan looked like. And as John kind of alluded to earlier, things were done a little bit differently then. So as they've come through and developed the property, some changes have been made that aren't necessarily reflected in this master concept plan. So as part of this process, we cleaned up that master concept plan to show the three city soccer fields to the north and development like as it's been constructed to date. So I think this will help in ease your concern about any additional area. This is an exhibit showing the YMCA itself now. And here's an overlay of the master concept plan on top of it. So as you can see, highlighted in blue here are the original development pods for a future build-out scenario, the YMCA. And that equaled 96,500 square feet. And so as we look forward to what was actually constructed in yellow, that total is 25,293 square feet. And with the addition of the school here in orange, that's 10,800 square feet. So the total development now that we're proposing is 36,000 square feet compared to the original plan of 96,000. While we're on this slide, I'll kind of point out the water management system. So right now, there's dry detention areas throughout the parking lot that drain the parking lot and the facilities. And there's a stormwater pipe that runs into this lake. So all the water quality is met within this lake. And then there's a control structure at this lake and an additional water treatment system that's above and beyond what's needed for the stormwater system that meanders out and runs into that canal. So I can assure you that all the stormwater is provided for on-site and it will be in the future.
Where's the ultimate outfall of the water?
I believe it runs down Kent Road up to Terry along, and then to the lake along I-75, and eventually into the Imperial River. So here's what the revised master concept plan looks like. Really, the only real addition to this plan is the school. I did want to point out too that the YMCA, about two years ago, constructed eight pickleball courts. We all know the need in the community for pickleball. And we've all realized that this is the perfect place for it. It's well buffered from neighbors. A lot of members from Benita Bay have been coming to play there. So as we put this plan together, we showed four more pickleball courts just for a possible future build-out. As I spoke about before, the daycare center, as an ancillary use to the YMCA, is already an approved use. And this just, this land use table really just points out that 10,000 square feet is allowed per developable acre. There's 15.4 developable acres, so that would be 150,000 square feet is allowed. And again, we're only proposing 36,000. So as part of this project, we are connected to East Terry. And a multimodal pathway is planned along East Terry. It's considered to be a major network. So we've worked with staff and come up with a crosswalk across Kent Road down here. So here's a blow-up of it that'll cross us into Pine Lake Preserve. There's a turnstile so campers and students can go on a field trip or have lunch over in the preserve, so that makes sense. And the Y was happy to provide that. As I said, LDC now requires that if you're connecting to a major multimodal network, that you provide a 10-to-12-foot pathway from your facility all the way to that connecting network point. So as I spoke about before, we're, the city property is in between the YMCA and ourselves. The area shown in gray and red is gonna be an upgraded sidewalk. Right now, it's between four and six-feet concrete sidewalk. We're gonna upgrade it to 10 feet wide to connect the facility. The sidewalks shown in yellow are right now four- or five-foot concrete sidewalks, and they connect out to East Terry now. So there's currently a connection. Yes?
Let me ask you. Go back to that last slide. The entrance to the school will be at that south entrance on Kent Road, right? That's the one you'll use.
Yeah.
Doesn't this facility will have a lot of drop-off? Stop and go and drop-off of kids?
So originally, the plan had a drop-off lane. The function of the other preschools, they found that the drop-off lane would just get clogged up. The parents would stay there. They'd take their kids back. They'd stop and talk to someone, come back out to their car five minutes later. So it was really problematic. So it works best for the YMCA to actually make the parents park, walk their kids into the school, and walk back.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, as I spoke about before, every dollar is important to the YMCA. And two of the things that we're tasked with here that we're having concerns about are extending the sidewalk out to East Terry and also the turn lane. So I just want to kind of go through those now and see if there's any kind of, you know, break that we can possibly get from those items. So north is up again here, coming down Kent Road and along Terry. There is a four-foot concrete sidewalk that runs to Ruudapa. And once you get to Ruudapa, then it turns into Lime Rock. And then there's just a paved shoulder that goes over I-75, continuing to the other side where it picks back up with a four-foot concrete sidewalk. You know, I don't want to say I don't see the need for having a 10-foot sidewalk or a multimodal network. I think it's great. I think it's important. But the access that's provided right now is beyond what is provided further down where the people will be coming from. So here's a zoomed-in view. And here's the extent of where there's not a sidewalk. And I've personally biked over this before. The, you know, along the bridge over 75, there's just a guardrail. It's not a pedestrian guardrail. So, you know, it is kind of an unsafe scenario for someone to be biking over that bridge as it is now. You know, understanding that bridge was constructed many years ago before anything was developed out beyond Terry.
Let me add something to that. I've been involved with the city of Benita Springs, applying for federal grant for a sidewalk on the build program federally that will dump a bunch of money into improvement of the sidewalk from Terry Street and Tamiami, which is Benita Bay's front entrance, all the way east to Benita Grant. And hopefully, we get some of this funded. So it addresses the crossing of the highway. So that's going to be an improved, multi-discipline path in the near future. May not be in my lifetime, but it'll be in your lifetime.
And like I said, I understand the need for it.
Right.
And I would push for it as well. The challenge now is the YMCA has raised money to build the preschool, not so much build sidewalks throughout the city. So that's, you know, that's their challenge. We're looking at roughly $20,000 per student. You know, based on the square footage, how many students you'll have at the school. So every $20,000 gives you another student in this facility. And looking back at what we'd have to improve here, we've looked at this with staff, and I think they would prefer to have us run along here down through the middle of the parking lot and then across. If we were to prove that to 10 feet wide, and that would cost somewhere around $100,000 to $140,000, which I know seems extreme. There's a four-foot sidewalk there now. You really can't widen an existing sidewalk. You have to tear it up and reconstruct a sidewalk. So I have a few other slides kind of showing that area. So the slide to the left is facing south. This is where the sidewalk picks up. So we would tie in our 10-foot sidewalk right here, and then it would connect around to the YMCA. The slide to the right is looking north, going out to the city soccer fields. And then this is connecting the east-west section. So the picture to the left, to the closest to you, that's along Kent Road. And then moving down along Kent Road, the challenge is, you know, it would have been preferred that we had a sidewalk along Kent Road. I don't know if you've ever been out there, but the drainage ditch is very deep and the slope is probably three to one, if that. So to widen that sidewalk all the way down Kent Road through the YMCA would have meant enclosing drainage, replacing landscaping, and honestly, probably would have killed this project. So staff's worked with us to provide the 10-foot sidewalk and pathway within the facility, which has helped greatly. So the slide to the right here is the city soccer fields. This is running out to the north. So looking along this section, this is the four-foot sidewalk on the city soccer field. There's three FPL power poles and a black vinyl coated chain link fence that would all need to be relocated. And this is the corner. So this is Terry out here. And this is Kent Road going down. And this is the connection to that sidewalk. Here's just a view coming down Terry. As Mr. Worser mentioned, hopefully, it will be a pathway one day, but it's not now. And then on the other side of the bridge, headed back west, just the bike lane, or paved shoulder, I should say. So those are our concerns about the sidewalk. And the YMCA right now, based on square footage and a daycare center, is slated to pay over $100,000 in traffic impact fees. And, you know, if we are required to build this sidewalk or any portion of this sidewalk, we'd ask that we could use some of those impact fees or all those impact fees to construct this sidewalk as opposed to give them to the city for traffic improvements. Additionally, in our TIS report, it was noted that this turn lane right now would need to be lengthened by 50 feet based on the fact that it's a 30 mile an hour road. And I can tell you, coming out of the YMCA, you generally don't hit 30 miles an hour. You know, you're going 15 or 20 miles an hour, knowing that you're coming up to a stop sign. So having a 50-foot longer D-cell lane, I personally don't think is necessary here. We would be open to looking at it in the future if, you know, the facility's constructed and then there's a need there in the future and improvement's warranted. And that would make sense at that time. Here's the 100-foot left turn lane. So this is coming out of Kent Road. And the improvement noted that- And the improvement noted that what would be needed is to extend this 50 more feet, which would impact the ditch and add more asphalt so that there's more queuing space turning left on Kent Road, or sorry, East Terry. So with that, I'll introduce Robert Connor from Hall Architects. He's going to go over the design of the facility. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Hello, for the record, my name is Robert Connor from Hall Architects. This is the third. As he mentioned, there's several daycare facilities that we've worked on with the YMCA, two up in Venice and now one down here. First thing that a lot of people have said when they look at the building is, "Where did this shape come from?" This kind of Pentagon shape. I pushed the button. Not that it's showing it in this image, but you saw it in the plan. Our first and foremost thought in our design is safety for the kids. And so the YMCA's balance of how they like to do their daycares is a double-loaded corridor, keep all the kids while they're in their classrooms. If they're moving around, keep them inside the classroom and then have a safe and secure playground outside. So for the most part, you're keeping kids inside. With this site, as we were laying out a long corridor, there were several site restrictions. There was a four-inch water main that cuts diagonally across. And then there was an easement on the property on the other side of the building, which took our long rectangular building and kind of folded it on itself. But what that gave us was kind of an opportunity to create a captured courtyard space in between. And so the classrooms act as a barrier and kind of wrap around the central courtyard play space. And then what that also allows us to do was that the length of the building, which typically these hallways get really long and not the most interesting space, is to break up that long hallway in two and wrap kind of a courtyard around it. Brings in natural light, brings in natural elements to the space. Here at the front entrance, all of that said, you don't really see that in this image. The idea for the front of the building, following the city of Benita's design guidelines, was to keep this building as low as possible, close to residential scale, similar to what the children are used to seeing as they approach. Also, having a large glass front allows them to see into the building, kind of ease their fears as they're approaching it. This is the view from the east on Kent Road. Just showing that it is highly buffered and then that the classroom windows will be looking out at greenery and not necessarily just a road. Again, the full front view from here that we've talked about. So as I talked about, this kind of central courtyard space, the building plan is kind of broken into two wings, where the infants and toddlers are on one half over to the right. And in the left, the twos, threes, fours, and five-year-olds are over there. They like to keep the age ranges separate. They have separate playfields so that they're not getting run over by the older kids. But here's just kind of that way of, as you can see the glass on the right, that's part of that long corridor. It brings nature, natural elements into it. And then that playground space, since the building kind of folded on itself, creates a covered outdoor space that they can use rain or shine. And at all of the other facilities, shade on playgrounds is always a big issue. This just completely covers the entire playground space and makes it a safe and fun environment for the kids. And this is, in the lobby, as you can see, opens out to that central courtyard out there, showing you how the building kind of wraps around that. And I think that's it. We clicked out of it. Thank you.
So I'll say thank you. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does the city want to be heard now? We're ready.
Can we turn the heat on?
We're all frozen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'll be kind of guiding you through this presentation. And those are the other people that we've had involved in this review. There are other applications that they have in the door right now with our department. So especially when we get into some of the architectural information, we'll be discussing how that review is going through with the city's architect as well as just this hearing itself, so. Here's a request. I think you've seen this on the presentation before you. They're looking to add a specific location on their master concept plan for a daycare. They have planned development zoning and a public semi-public future land use designation. The city did pull this out of the DRGR several years ago and made this a public semi-public property as opposed to that DRGR in anticipation that there would be additional development or at least uses out there on that site. There is the property. I think we're all familiar with where it's located. When we started looking at areas of concerns for compatibility, obviously, the area to the south is the most important. Really, if you look to the west, the closest road is Ruta Pa. And to the east is owned by the government, so that is going to be in preserve. This kind of gives you a feel for what the future land use designation shows. As I said, this property was DRGR and was subsequently taken out to provide a public semi-public designation to reflect the use of the property. Zoning designations. And as you can see, you're looking at AG2, RS3, RS3 that surround this as well as the city's property for the soccer fields to the north. And here's a plan. You saw this during the applicant's presentation. The discussion on the stormwater, I think this kind of shows a little bit and provides a little bit more detail on this. Property is already impervious and has been included in the current design. And as a result, they'll modify a little bit of the grading under the development order and also under the Water Management District permit. But it does not significantly alter or change how they're currently handling the function of that stormwater system. And here's a particular location of this. What's important to realize here is just the plan designation of how they're showing the relationship of their site to the property to the south. And what you'll see when we get to... This is the fact that that area that we were just looking at shows a significant amount of landscaping, 20 feet on the neighboring property to the south, additionally, I believe, 30 feet to the north. That will also be supplemented with building plantings upon the time of construction. Going back, use is already included in there as an accessory or ancillary use. So the use itself is covered. We're not looking to change the text to the planned development, only the map. And within the development standards that they have, they are consistent with those. And here's the elevation. This, normally, we would present to you a handful of elevations that I know that you've come to know and love. And we talk about how the architecture of the building relates to the site. In this particular case, we can still do the same thing, but they are also under review as part of their development order application. And Sam Vincent, the city architect, is working with their architect. A couple of those things they're looking at coming to a resolution on are the color of the blue and also some of the undulations of the building, as the architects like to call it the mass avoid relationship. So we're pretty close. I wouldn't say that they're all that far apart, but there's still some discussions going back and forth. And if there's any comments from this board, I'm sure we can incorporate those in those reviews as well. Here's some aerials. And I think you saw some of these from the applicant. But we took some of our own pictures underneath there to show you exactly what the neighboring property to the south would look at. As you can tell, it is pretty thick in terms of native vegetation or existing vegetation. And that should be supplemented if this project is approved. And here's the same cross-section. What I like to draw attention to is not so much the aerial on the top of the screen, but on the south, where you're showing where the existing builder or the proposed building is looking to go and what the relationship will be to that existing house that you see will be the closest property to this project. And in that review, we've determined that the construction of this building will be compatible with that existing family, single-family house. Here's a little bit of the pathway discussion. And I don't think there's much controversy in this particular slide because we all agree that this portion of it will show a 10-foot-wide path. Where I think we start to come into a little bit of a difference of opinion is what to do with this portion that's highlighted in yellow. According to the regulations, that would be a connection that the applicant would be required to make. However, we have suggested if the applicant feels that this is something that should be altered or deviated from, it would be their opportunity to present to this board and also to the city council. One, because of the existing path, and two, because of the cost. How this board weighs those facts into your evaluation is entirely up to you. I can simply tell you that the regulations that have been handed down by city council show that that connection needs to be made. There is a connection. It does not meet the required width. So that's where we come to a little bit of a discrepancy. Here are some of the concerns that we've kind of worked through with them. I think the applicant did a pretty good job of showing how these play out, both in terms of traffic and with some of the environmental concerns. This is the narrative version of those, obviously. And I think that the evaluation of the turn lane, based upon some of the standards it's required, operationally, existing traffic, that's obviously something we can look at if this board and the city council determines that's something we should be doing. And the stormwater and drainage. This gets into kind of what we discussed before on the modeling program that the applicant has voluntarily decided to go through. We're still working on putting the standards of that into the land development code. So while we're doing that, we're discussing with applicants the idea of voluntarily incorporating that as part of their approval process. So far, we've had a pretty good rate of success with that. And this is one of the applicants that's also agreed to provide that information to us. And the bottom of the screen says that they have not been asking for any deviations. How this board looks at some of the multimodal or turn lane analysis could possibly alter that. The findings of this project, they are consistent with the standards of the land development code and the comprehensive plan as conditioned. We are relatively in agreement with the applicant in terms of what they have proposed and how it relates and its consistency and compatibility, both surrounding land uses and with the standards of the city. We have a couple of areas of discrepancy. However, regardless of how this board or the city council votes, we do believe the project is consistent with all of those standards. Here's our recommendations. We do recommend approval. I believe all of these have been included in your cheat sheet so that you may be able to see those a little bit more clearly. And additional conditions. These get into a little bit of the nitty-gritty. We're also talking about putting downspouts on the drainage, turn lane improvements to Terry, consistent with the land development code. This also, if you look at item G, this is where we have had a discrepancy or a difference of opinion with the applicant where it comes to the multimodal and complete streets access. As I previously stated, in this particular case, the access exists, but it does not exist to the width that is required. So we're not talking about the existence of access. We're talking about the width and area of that access.
So your disagreement is they want to, you want to make it 10 feet?
The standards of the land development code require 10 feet. The applicant is stating because that facility exists at a lesser width and because of the cost, can we simply work with that existing sidewalk area?
How does it work now?
Right now, you have a situation where there's not a school. And even though a school may exist, under the current situation, I don't know too many daycare...
Kids are going to use...
Kids are going to be riding the bike. So I think that in the short term, it shouldn't really deviate from its existing use. As the school expands and once you start getting into the elementary school range, I think that you really should consider how that path operates because that's when you do start to see children using that path more and more. The proposed students probably are not much of a threat to be riding their bikes, but...
Could you address their suggestion that the, if they were to have to go forward and do this, that the impact fee be waived and be able to be used for that? That's a condition I've never heard before, so I need to know what role we would have, if any, in that.
In the past, when we've discussed impact fees with applicants, what happens is you have in the land development code a section that says if an improvement is site-related, meaning that if your project requires improvement to public facilities, you've got to do it. If it is not because of it or you're only contributing a part of that necessary improvement, then you can start talking about credits. In terms of this board, it's really the city council that makes the ultimate determination. It really comes down to numbers when they have engineering. So at this point, we can have the discussion, but it's probably a little premature.
I just didn't know what our role was in that. This is the first time I've had that raised...
They're just testing out their presentation, the city council, hoping for a recommendation.
Obviously, we can have a discussion on that. It's part of their request, but it really is something that's generally dealt with at a little bit later of a stage.
And could I have your input?
If I may. It seems to me that sounds like a policy choice.
Yes, I would, that's sort of what I was asking, is that it's...
That's really not our role to make policy.
And I would have agreed with that. I was, so I was just trying to get some input on that. And I'd also like to have the same advice or something concerning the width of the sidewalks. Whether, I mean, that seems to me an exception that the council can certainly give, but whether it's appropriate for us, I'm not overly comfortable with, shall I say.
Well, and I can tell you from our opinion, it's something that I understand the applicant's point of view and their argument in this particular case. However, since we've been given this direction, and it is a fairly recent policy decision made by the council, I do not feel comfortable stating that it would not be an issue. And I probably, a similar feeling that you have.
I mean, my feeling is that that's what the rule is and that's what our responsibility is to apply. But I have no problem with the council wishes to address that. And I would think you would have to make that argument to the council. So I just want to, since this is one of the things I always come back to...
I would agree.
Be clear on that. Thank you.
And we've reached the end.
So are there any questions of Mr. Dolmer from the board? Is there anything further that the city wishes to offer?
Not unless it's requested, sir.
I'm going to have something. But is there anything further that you wish to offer, Mr. Barber, on behalf of your client?
I would just say, big picture. This is a not-for-profit organization who's looking to better the community. And to construct over $100,000 worth of sidewalks on city property, that money would have to be fundraised for from the local community. So I think that money could be put to better use.
Okay. Is there any public comment at this time? Anybody wishes to be heard? So before we get to a motion here, I'd like to understand what the areas, precisely what the areas of disagreement are between the city and the applicant. Can someone do that for me? You want to do it, Mr. Dolmer, or...
I think we're looking at the improvements to the roadway and also the pathway. All other areas, I think we're pretty much in general agreement.
Six foot versus 10-foot pathway.
Yes, sir.
And then on the road...
Turn lane.
The turn lane, you wish to be extended from 100 feet to 150 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Other than that, there's agreement?
Yes, sir.
You agree with that, Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so does anybody, do you wish to present anything further? Okay, so, does anybody, do you wish to present anything further? What is the wishes of the board?
I want to make a motion to approve the project and the city and the, while I work on the roadway and the sidewalk issue, try to get that resolved. But I'll make a motion to approve the project.
Exactly.
Well, I'm not sure that I understand the motion. The motion, it, as you framed it, seems to me to leave things, I mean, these are issues we have to decide, aren't they? I mean, one way or the other. I'm not asking you how to vote.
Could I make a suggestion of a, maybe a modification of that? Is that we, as a zoning board, move to accept the project as presented by the staff with their requirements in there, but that since we believe that the law or we know that the law requires us to approve both the sidewalks and the roadway, we, and we, but we are sensitive to the notion that this is a nonprofit and they're bringing to our city a wonderful project that is enormously needed, that we urge the council to use its power, which it has, to consider these exceptions. So that, I would like to make it clear, at least for me, that I would, if I were to have that power, grant the exceptions. But I don't have that power and I don't think we do as a zoning board. So, I think what we would like, what we might be able to do is do what you did, but simply say, we recommend approval as presented, but urge the council to consider under its power.
I withdraw my motion and let you make a motion.
So, now I have to phrase that in something other than a professorial 10-minute exercises, right?
I think, I think hers is a little clearer. I think, Ms. Craig, your motion was to accept and the recommendation of staff, but to further recommend to the council that they take a look at the sidewalk and other issues.
Right. Thank you for bringing that into better word.
Okay, then. So...
Why we have legal counsel?
This is important. In the event that no one from the zoning board is at the, at the meeting, it is very important that the city council understand where we're coming from. And I'm not sure, listening to their meetings, that they always understand where we're coming from. Look, this is a, I don't know how to phrase it, but I'll do my best here. What we're trying to say is, the law is the law. And if, we don't make policy. But here's an exception. Here's a case where we want to follow the law, but we have reservations about the law. But we're not going to make policy. We're not going to change it. And it seems to me that it's very important that they understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm kind of writing this down. You all agree. I would simply state that the zoning board understands the law is the law. However, in this particular case, you are empathetic to the applicant's concerns regarding the multi-use path and the roadway improvements.
Right. I mean, I think that's where the two motions were coming from.
But what, my point is, we really want this to happen. I think this is a wonderful thing for our community. And I also am very sensitive to how hard it is to raise money, having done that a number of times. So, but that's, that is a case I think you bring to the council and maybe bring some people to the council to talk about how important that is to our community, although I imagine they can figure that out all by themselves. So, anyway, I want you, I want to be clear that we are following what we can do as a zoning board, but that we are very empathetic to you.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Board member Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Board member Brunswick?
Yes.
Board member Donley?
Yes.
Board member Worcester?
Yes.
And board member Craig?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, before we adjourn, I'm going to have one other thing. But is there anything further on the agenda for today? The November meeting, is that still on?
The special meeting dates that have been sent to you?
Yes.
No, sir.
The meeting's off?
Currently, yes. Stay tuned.
You mean it will come on again?
Four days.
I've heard the plan.
Correct. Those, right now, those have been taken off the table. However, based upon discussions with that applicant, we are looking to reschedule dates. So, they won't be those dates, but we'll be looking for new dates.
Talking about the Weeks case?
In January?
So, but is it going to be in November, though?
It's Raptor Bay, not Weeks.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think so, but I don't know.
So, some of us will be out of town Thanksgiving week.
If you all want to provide any of your known scheduling conflicts to me, probably, I would say through the end of January that you know, I will make sure that those are included in any of the discussions that, at least I'm a part of when it comes to scheduling those dates.
So, that you want over the Christmas time, too?
Whatever you know, because I don't know what dates are currently being considered. So, that way, if you give me everything through the end of January, we should be covered. And if for some reason we're not, we can have another discussion at your next meeting.
How many days will be necessary for that?
I think we had looked at two. So, I think we'll still be looking for a two-day period again.
No, two days.
Yes, sir.
And there's nothing else on the calendar for November?
I think we had looked for a special, there is other stuff, but I think this is a special date. So, the regular, I'll let Jackie come up here.
We have the continuous 30 days of this third case.
Right. There is a continuance of the third case, but...
Good morning, zoning board. Yeah, we'll go ahead and maintain our regularly scheduled meeting for November,